That's under control, believe it or not.
Yes, ma'am.
We're ready to begin this evening's board meeting. It is 6:04 PM. At this time, we would request all cell phones and/or pagers be turned off or put in the silent mode, and also ask that you please refrain from using flash photography except during the special presentations portion of the meeting. I understand we ran out of agendas a little while ago, but those have been replenished, so if anybody needs to jump up and grab one, be my guest. We want to welcome back for a second meeting in a row Brandon Rice, one of our student panel, I'm not sure what the official title is.
His name tag says Student Representative.
Well, okay. An official student representative, this is his second meeting. We're glad to have you here and look forward to your participation in setting events when we go through the evening. We'd like to remind members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential, and the district's vision, which is to be a world-class school system. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance, two recognitions, four resolutions, public comment, and action items, which include three items under Executive Services, ten under Business and Finance, eleven under Operations, one item under Teaching and Learning, one under Unfinished Business and Tabled Items, five Superintendent's Recommendations, one of which is Good Cause. Dr. Graham, could you please provide an explanation for this Good Cause item?
The Good Cause item comes as a result of something that was tabled prior to winter break, and the issue has now come back and needs to have action taken by the Board.
As Presiding Officer, I find there is good cause to add this item to the agenda. And there will be four items under Other Business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Those are my Mr. Armstrong, I missed the second. Mrs. Dozier? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. After the special presentations portion of the agenda, I'm going to call for a brief recess to allow those who wish to depart an opportunity to do so, so if you please hold still until every recognition has been made, we would appreciate it. Ms. Fisher, tonight will deliver the invocation, after which Mrs. Dozier will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If I could ask you all please to stand.
Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to meet here this evening, and ask you to bless all here present. We ask that you bestow upon this Board the wisdom, understanding, and desire to come together to make decisions that will benefit our students. Please guide the Superintendent and her staff as they perform the daily tasks required to keep us informed and our students and staff inspired and safe. Please look upon us and grant all that we need to guide our students in these times of change and challenge. For this and your many blessings, we thank you. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
I would like Harrison Stroll, a straight A, seventh grade student at Harns Marsh Middle School, and Principal Eric McPhee to please join me at the lectern. Each year, the Florida Prepaid College Foundation sponsors an essay contest in select school districts for students to write an essay describing what they believe to be the legacy of any former governor of the state of Florida. The school district of Lee County was selected to participate in the annual Governor's Recognition Scholarship Program. Students were to submit a 500-word essay answering the essay prompt. Choose one former governor of Florida and describe his most significant impact on the Sunshine State and your life today. Harrison chose Jeb Bush and education reform. This year Harrison Stroll was chosen as the district winner for the 2013 Governor's Recognition Scholarship Essay Contest. Harrison will be awarded a two-plus-two tuition and local fee plan scholarship. The school board and superintendent are pleased to recognize Harrison Stroll for being awarded the 2013 Governor's Recognition Scholarship.
Thank you for taking.
Good job.
At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Marshall Bauer, President of the Foundation for Lee County Public Schools, Mr. Gary Avon, and Ms. Dorothy Dottie Gordon to please join me at the lectern. Take Stock in Children is a locally implemented scholarship program in the state of Florida that targets low-income, at-risk students in the Lee County Public Schools. Every day, our local community members are volunteering their time to provide a consistent, supportive, and guiding hand to our young people. The guidance of an adult mentor can help each child discover and unlock his or her full potential. Community members give generously of themselves and demonstrate their strong commitment to quality education in the school district of Lee County. One promise of the program is to match students with a caring, adult mentor. Gary Avon and Dottie Gordon dedicate their time to enhancing and enriching the education of Take Stock in Children scholars, enabling them to reach high school graduation and begin college. Each demonstrates the effectiveness a mentor can have in the life of a student, and we are so proud to honor them for their service to our community. In collaboration with the Foundation for Lee County Public Schools, the school board and superintendent are pleased to recognize Gary and Dottie for their dedication and commitment to the students of Lee County.
Would you like to say something?
Thank you very much. I started the process of mentoring back in 2000 and worked with a couple of students through their high school years, and then I decided I needed to take full advantage of my retirement, so I stopped doing it for a while. Well, I missed it so much that I asked the foundation if I could please go back and do it again at Cape Coral High School. However, they had enough mentors, so I wasn't able to do it for a while, but then I've been back with them now for the last, oh, three years, I believe, working with them, and I really enjoyed it a lot. Thank you.
Well, thank you for this wonderful recognition. I moved to Lee County a little over seven years ago, and I'm one that strongly believes to give back to your community that you reside in. This was a perfect opportunity for me to give back to the community and to the Lee County, the county that I live in. So again, I am very grateful to have this opportunity to be recognized, and I look forward to many more years of serving our students here of Lee County, so thank you.
And Mr. Bauer does not want to speak this evening.
I would like to invite Ms. Su Rashawn to join me at the lectern. Ms. Rashawn is the District's Director for Career, Technical, and Adult Education. Career and technical education, CTE, programs educate students to be college and career-ready and play a crucial role in preparing a skilled workforce. In addition, CTE can help students persist in and complete high school by increasing student engagement, building positive relationships, and providing innovative instructional delivery methods. Also, students taking CTE courses often have higher grade point averages in college and have better employment and earnings outcomes than other students. The school board is pleased to acknowledge the school district's CTE programs and the important role they play in preparing our students for academic success and the workforce. Mr. Chairman, I would like to recognize the Association for Career and Technical Education in recognizing the value of CTE by moving for adoption the resolution proclaiming the month of February 2014 as Career and Technical Education Month, and by doing so, encourage educators, counselors, and administrators to continue to promote career and technical education as an option for our students.
Board members, you heard the motion. Mayor Fisher, call and favor, signify by a aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you. School board members and Dr. Graham, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the school board, the superintendent, the Foundation of Lee County Public Schools, and the business community for the tremendous support you show to career and technical education. It's because of you we have been able to establish programs such as STEM at Work and Teacher Immersion to help our students and our teachers understand what is expected of them in the real world. Take that, take that support, and then add to it the incredible teachers and the amazing students, and it provides for a career and technical education program that is recognized and admired, not only at the state level, but nationally as well. From our middle school exploration programs to our high school programs that provide the opportunities for industry certifications, to our two technical centers and our public service academy, which all provide for credentialed and licensed programs, we are working hard every day to make our students college and career-ready. It is my honor to represent the Career and Technical Education Department in Lee County and to accept this proclamation. Thank you.
I would like to invite Dr. Cheryl Clark to join me at the lectern, please. Dr. Clark is the Director of Title I Intervention Programs. Individuals from all walks of life volunteer in their valuable time and numerous talents to students throughout Lee County. They provide a number of services, including but not limited to, working with students in need of help with academic subjects, assisting school media centers, accompanying students and teachers on class trips, and monitoring lunchrooms and playgrounds. Regardless of their duties, school volunteers have proven to be an invaluable resource in enhancing the education experience of the district's students. Mr. Chairman, I wish to join the Florida Department of Education and recognize the importance of school volunteers by moving for the adoption of the resolution proclaiming the month of February 2014 as Florida School Volunteer Month.
(inaudible) call and favor, signify by a aye. Aye. Congratulations.
It is my honor.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board members, Dr. Graham, and I'm honored, and it's with pride that I accept this resolution for our volunteers. As you're aware, the reason you're doing this tonight, because they are very valuable partners in the education of children in our district. And even tonight, you recognized one of the mentors in Take Stock. That's just one of the many ways that our volunteers come into our schools, assist teachers, students, staff, as well as in departments, and volunteer their time. Even, we have a student representative, and I have an idea that he's volunteering his time. So it's just not retired, it's students, it's across the board. I'd like to share just a couple of facts for FY13. We had almost 27,000 hours of volunteers in our schools, serving 119 schools, that does include our charters. So people are very interested in what's happening in our school and very interested in helping out our schools. And we have over, almost 900,000, excuse me, hours. The other one was the actual volunteers, but the hours is almost 900,000 hours, and this equates, in fact, in our strategic plan, we would often look at this data and equate it to a per pupil ratio, and this equates to 10 hours per pupil in our district. So I think this is awesome. I thank you for honoring them in the month of February. And quite often, in fact, I think every school honors their volunteers in the month of February, so if you get that invitation, you will love getting out and telling them with a special thank you. So, once again, thank you very much.
I would like to invite the Honorable Councilwoman Teresa Watkins-Brown to join me here, please. Councilwoman Watkins-Brown is also a member of the Black County, Lee County Black History Society Board of Directors. Black History Month is also known as American History Month, African-American History Month. It is an annual observance in the United States, Canada, and the United Kingdom for remembrance of important people and events in the history of African heritage. It is celebrated annually in the United States in February. Black History Month had its beginnings in 1926 in the United States, when historian Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History announced the second week of February to be Negro History Week. This week was chosen because it marked the birthday of both Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Doug- Douglas. Woodson created the holiday with the hope that eventually it would be eliminated when black history became fundamental to American history. Negro History Week was met with enthusiastic response. It prompted the creation of black history clubs, an increase in interest among teachers, and an interest from progressive whites. ESPN always celebrated Black History Month throughout the month of February. Negro History Week grew in popularity throughout the following decades, with mayors across the United States endorsing it as a holiday. In 1976, the federal government acknowledged the expansion of Black History Week to Black History Month by the leaders of the Black United Students at Kent State University in February of 1969. The first celebration of Black History Month occurred at Kent State in February of 1970. Six years later, during the bicentennial, the expansion of Negro History Week to Black History Month was recognized by the US government. Gerald Ford spoke in regards to this, urging all Americans to seize the opportunity to honor too often neglected accomplishments of black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. Mr. Chairman, I am pleased to move for adoption the resolution proclaiming February 2014 as National Black History Month.
(inaudible) call and favor, signify by a aye.
Aye. And now I would like to present the resolution to Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you so much.
And I'm also going to ask her if she'd like to say a few words.
On behalf of the President of the Lee County Black History Society, Jared Eady, I accept this resolution, and I thank you, school board, for this great recognition. I'm only the city liaison for the Black History Society. These are the real workaholics, Charles, and Herbie, and Deborah, and there's another host of other members of the Black History Society that really keep things going. But we thank you for this recognition, and I'm sure every African-American will celebrate the month of February, and we thank you for recognizing that and giving this opportunity for the celebration to take place. So again, I say thank you.
At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Lori Brooks to join me at the lectern. Ms. Brooks is the District's Coordinator of Student Counseling Services. National School Counseling Week is an annual event sponsored by the American School Counselor Association to focus attention on the unique contributions of professional school counselors and to highlight the tremendous impact they have in helping students achieve school success and to plan a career. School counselors are valued individuals who are committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents, so that they might each reach their full potential. They also work with parents, teachers, and other educators to ensure that everyone is united in the mission of furthering the educational, personal, and social development growth of each student. Mr. Chairman, in recognition of and appreciation for the district's school counselors, I am pleased to move for the adoption of the resolution proclaiming February 3rd through the 7th, 2014, as National School Counseling Week.
Board members, you've heard the motion, is there a second? Mayor Mr. Armstrong, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Ms. Brooks, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you so much. Absolutely. Thank you.
Board members and Dr. Graham.
Board members and Dr. Graham as well. (laughing) I would like to thank you on behalf of the school counselors for this recognition of National School Counseling Week. I bring with me today a small representation, but a mighty one, of the over 100 counselors we have that are degreed and certified in the school district, and they bless me every day because I get to work with them. National School Counseling Week highlights the unique contribution of professional school counselors within our school system and how students are different as a result of what they do. This year's theme is School Counseling: Building Magical Futures, and it's very fitting for our counselors in Lee County. On a daily basis, our district's school counselors positively impact student achievement while providing meaningful ways for students to develop and grow in the areas of academic, social, personal, and career development. Counselors truly help to build magical futures for students. However, they are unable to do it alone, and that's where the support of Dr. Graham and each of the school board members, along with district and school-based leadership, parents, and the community play an extremely important role in the success of our students every day, because you empower counselors to do what it is they do. So thank you very much for recognizing National School Counselor Week, and also school counselors for what they do in Lee County.
I want you guys to, do you want to have an introduction? Okay. I'm going to ask the counselors just to introduce themselves and the school they're from, so you can get some names and faces to the professionals that work behind the scenes every day for our students.
Good evening. I'm Kim Samuels, and I'm the counselor at Sunshine Elementary in Lehigh Acres.
Good evening. I'm Amanda Allen. I'm the school counselor at Franklin Park Elementary.
Hello. Nestor Avila at Calusa Middle School in Cape Coral.
Good evening. I'm Susan Harden. I'm one of the counselors at Fort Myers Institute of Technology.
I'm Lee Cummins. I'm the counselor at the Alternative Learning Center in Fort Myers.
Good evening. Rosa Skinner, Okemick Middle School.
Hi. My name is Anne Marie Nickel, and I'm the school counselor at Pelican Elementary School in Cape Coral.
and go home or go to dinner or whatever.
Not fill out a card that would like to speak on the left side. Saying no one, Mr. Martin, I ask you to call a first name.
education program for at-risk kids between the ages of fourteen and eighteen years old. Our kids come from Lee County School District, and our ultimate goal is to get them, these kids, back into their regular Lee County schools. I'm here tonight with several of my fellow board members and our executive director to request transportation funds to support fuel and maintenance for our program's buses. This is not the first time we have made this request. We wrote letters on May sixth, August eighth, and November thirteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Dr. Graham and Dr. Atkins have met with us, and we appreciate their ongoing communication. However, we have still not resolved the issue at hand. The details are that the total transportation cost annually is one hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars, of which we received fourteen thousand and thirty-six FTE transportation dollars from the school district, leaving us with a deficit of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Transporting the kids to and from their homes each day is vital to their attendance and their success, just as it is for all the children in our district. We are requesting an additional one hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars from Lee County schools to provide transportation for the kids without depleting the funds we have to educate, treat, and rehabilitate our children, with the ultimate goal to return them to the public school setting. We have an impressive success rate of accomplishing this goal, and we plan to continue it and improve upon it. We understand that the board has a budget that has been finalized, but in light of the fact that this request was submitted more than eight months ago, we feel that these dollars should have been in the current budget. Our new contract is not up until June thirtieth, and we do not have the resources to keep going. We plan to negotiate our upcoming contract to include transportation, but we cannot wait that long for action. I could cite Florida statutes about transportation for disadvantaged students, and I could reference similar organizations in our community who enjoy school-provided transportation for their students, but I would rather appeal to your sense of responsibility to our children at AMI Kids, our community's children. For all of us here who have children of our own, kids who went all through Lee County schools and came out all right, we're the lucky ones. Without proper supervision, with just a few careless adolescent mistakes, any one of us could have been a parent of an AMI kid. And if that had happened, we would want our children in a place where they could get the help they need, where a disciplined academic program combined with behavioral treatment and family therapy is the right combination to get these kids back on track. AMI Kids is keeping up with their responsibilities, keeping kids off the street, keeping our streets safe from crime, saving our taxpayer dollars not spent on detention centers, and most important of all, returning these kids to their regular public school, to our Lee County schools, to complete their education, make better decisions, and become productive citizens. AMI Kids has suffered budget cuts from the government.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up. Next speaker is Mr. John Ingram.
My name is John Ingram. I'm past chair for AMI Kids Southwest Florida. I do not have much to add to what Phyllis has already presented to you. We are a nonprofit organization. We have really, really had some severe cuts in our budgets. We're at a turning point right now of survival. We do have a reserve. Our reserves will carry us for another four to five months, but without those reserves, we would have some real problems. We are asking for some relief in transportation. If we can get some relief in transportation costs, along with our fundraisers, we're going to be able to continue on and serve the community. We have served the community for twenty years since we've opened our door, and since that period of time, two thousand two hundred kids have graduated from our program. Our program differentiates itself from any other program that works with juvenile delinquency in that we are an evidence-based program. We have certified teachers, and this year, we will be an accredited school by June of this coming year. I ask for your consideration, and anything that could be done to give us relief in this particular program would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mr. Bert Saunders.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Bert Saunders with the Gray Robinson Law Firm, and I'm representing the Florida High School for Accelerated Learning, South Lee Campus. My purpose tonight is to simply thank you, School Board members, for giving us an opportunity to amend our application for a third charter school. I also want to tell you that I've been in the local government business for a long time. I've worked with an awful lot of local government staffs and state government staffs. You are blessed to have people working for you that are truly dedicated. Mr. Martin, Mr. Jeff McCullers, your superintendent, all of the folks that were involved in the reviews of our application did an incredible amount of work. These applications are over seven hundred pages long, and your staff had multiple applications. And I'll tell you, they went through every line item. That's why we had some difficulty. We had an application that was not perfect by any stretch of the imagination. Ms. Morgan pointed out that there were some deficiencies in it during our discussion on December tenth. Your staff met with us two days later, and we worked out every one of those deficiencies. We'll have a third school in South Lee Camp, South Lee County. Hundreds of students that have either dropped out of school or are about to drop out of school will benefit from that. So I want to thank you for your leadership, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to present an amended application and get through this process. Procedurally, Mr. Martin has a couple items on here. You have an item that needs to be taken off the agenda, and then the approval of our item. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Next speaker is Ms. Kathleen Robinson.
Good evening, School Board members and Madam Superintendent. Oops. I'm up here to beg. You know, I do it so well. You know, the bus driver is very important to the school systems. You always say it every year, how important we are. So now I'm going to ask you to help us, well, not us, but me. I would like to have a month, or maybe a day in a month, designated to the bus drivers to have breakfast with the bus drivers. And I'm going to ask you, because McDonald's is having a special, and I do like sales, if you guys could come up with like eighty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents. I have approximately fifty-four students. I service North Fort Myers Academy of the Arts, and I have the Suncoast Run, and I love my kids. They're good kids, and I enjoy them every day. Even if I have a headache, when I start, I end up with a great day when I see them. They always hug me and kiss me. I love it. And they have a special with buy one, get one free. So I figured I'd take advantage of that, and I was going to ask you if I could have the month, one day in the month of February, but February seems all booked up. I've seen February, February, February for all these things. And the special is going to end in March. So I would like to know if we could have a day sometime before March with my children and me with breakfast with the bus driver, with egg McMuffin, and each one of them could get one for breakfast. And I think it's kind of nutritious. It's egg and bread and whatever else they put on there. I don't know. It tastes good. And then maybe we could put something in our schedule every year that the bus drivers have breakfast with their students in the school. Some of us have back-to-back runs now, and we can't get that morning, but we could get that afternoon, that later in the morning school, you know? So what do you think? Can we do that? It's only eighty-five dollars and fifty cents, guys, just for me. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Mr. Nestor Avila.
Nestor Avila, and I am a certified professional school counselor. I'm here on behalf of the Lee County School Counselor Association as the president-elect. I'd like to thank Dr. Graham for her initiatives and the school board for supporting school counselors. The Lee County School Counselor Association's mission is to develop relationships and advocate academic achievement in a world-class school system. We look forward to your continued support as you support school counselors. They're dedicated in their work to help develop students' academic, career, personal, and social skills, and they do this through data-driven efforts. So we look forward to your continued support. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ms. Denise Johns.
Good evening, Board members and Madam Superintendent. My name is Denise John. I'm the president of Southwest Florida National Action Network, and I have my vice president, Darryl Clare, here as well. Dr. Darryl Clare, I'm here on behalf of the event that we had, "Man and Education to a Better America" at ALC in Fort Myers, December sixth, two thousand thirteen, which turned out to be a phenomenal event. We had a senator come in and speak as the keynote speaker. We had a lovely board with Dr. Ruthie Lowmeyer on and Black Caucus President Jerry Ware and others that were on the board as well. At this point, we've presented what we would like to do. We've sat with Dr. Bohatch on numerous occasions with ALC, and we're ready to move forward with technology. We understand that all children are not college-bound, and we want every child to have a chance to be marketable for jobs as they graduate and turn eighteen years old from school. So with that being said, after meeting with Mr. McCormick from MIT, he is willing to work with us as well. There are certain classes that kids can be certified from ALC before they graduate and have to go back to their regular schools. It would be a plus in their corner if they can get certified, go back to their regular schools, and upon graduation, be marketable in a work environment. So I am here to find out when can we start meeting to get this going.
Next speaker is Ms. Jerry Ware.
Board and to Dr. Graham, I'm here on behalf of all of the kids of Lee County. But in specific, I'm here because I learned, along with the other members of Board Watch, it's a group that we, with the Lee County Democratic Black Caucus, we've been attending your meetings. If you notice, we are quiet. We're very observant. But we learned at the last meeting that there will be three town hall meetings. And I was a little concerned because I did not think three could take care of our population well. So I'm here, I mentioned this to Mr. Armstrong, and I've also called Mrs. Scott and asked to see if you all can help us get more venues. We need to address three-three-nine-one-six, three-three-nine-zero-five. It's heavily Latino, and I don't believe they will all go to Lehigh Acres. That's quite a drive. I would like to see us get more sites because we need to inform them. I learned that we're going to be having certification in March, and our communities need to be aware of what's going on. So if you would, please expeditionally consider this because March is only a month away, and we need to get more venues where we can inform the people. And at this time, I would like for the board members to stand. Board Watch, if you all would stand, if we recognize, I'd appreciate it. They're kind of shy. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Mr. Anthony Thomas.
Good evening, members of the school board, Madam Superintendent. At the last meeting, you guys did a resolution honoring Dr. King. I thought that was very nice. Dr. King had a quote. He said, "I can't be what I want to be unless you can be what you want to be." And I think that's appropriate here because we had a discussion some months ago at the board, voted. We had the three women at the time. Apparently, I got a call today from someone informing me that Mary Fisher had gone the other way, and that- other way in that workshop that you guys had today, that the three board members have indicated they do not want to create an African-American and a Latino advisory board. I think we're going backwards. We have a new superintendent, a woman, second woman in Lee County history. Her predecessor, Dr. Burke, was fully in support of creating these two boards because he recognized that equity and diversity was important. You know, I hear these people make these things about the Equity and Diversity Committee and how this represents the viewpoints of minorities. But if you actually read the ordinance or the policy that created, it's very specific on what it's supposed to be doing. That board only meets four times a year. So you're already telling me that I can't be what I want to be because your other boards that you have, you have five standing boards. Your five standing boards meet every month, but Equity and Compliance Committee, they only meet four times a year. Now, how is that equal? That's not equal. So I'm very disappointed, and I urge Mrs. Fisher to reconsider. And I would say to Donnie and to Tom, and we spoke about this in the past, and I said, "Look, Donnie, you represent the Dunbar community in Fort Myers in your ward. I know how you got elected with this school-busting rage that was going on at the time. You were on Fox News every day complaining about your kid being bussed over." And there was a lot of rage with people wanting to bust their kids all over the place. So I think it's incumbent on you because I think you, maybe not knowing, but you played to a division, an anger that certain people in our community have about their children being bussed all over the place, and they elected you. But now you're here, you have to represent everybody. And I just think that it is so inappropriate for us, at one meeting, to pass a resolution honoring Dr. King, and then at the next meeting, we come up with these phony, lame excuses about, "Well, we don't need to have these boards, we need more inclusivity." Last time I checked, ain't nobody on here to look like me. And I think that these three women are phenomenal women. I love having them. I love having the superintendent. But again, I say again, nobody on this board look like me. What is wrong with having a policy in place that will allow minority viewpoint to come up through the stovepipe? I think we're headed in the wrong direction. I earnestly beseech you, Mary Fisher, please come on back to the...
To the folks from AMI, we do have a budget, and that budget is well-spoken for. You're asking us to consider finding another $171,000 for you. I appreciate the difficulty that you outlined, but that $171,000 would create some difficulties for us. However, I'm going to ask Dr. Graham if she would look into any potential solutions that there might be. Not, I'm not asking that it be done. I'm asking that the inquiry be made to see if there's something out there that we haven't uncovered. But budgets are budgets. I know that you've mentioned that you've lost money in the last few years. This board is operating this school district with $300 million less than we had three years ago. We've made some significant adjustments in our spending. And I hate the whole subject, but that's the reality of what we're dealing with. And whether we can help solve your problem or partially solve it, I don't know. But I'm asking Dr. Graham if she would please to look into that. Kathleen, I love you. You've always got great ideas. But personally, I don't know how we can fund one bus driver's outing with their students. Maybe somebody else has a great idea about how we might do that, but I just, I don't know how we could do it. Ms. John and Ms. Ware, I appreciate your coming to us tonight and explaining where you're coming from. I do think that there might be a gap in the coverage on the workshops that we're going to have, the information workshops, and we've already had a brief conversation about that. And I would ask Dr. Graham if she would please to take a look at that and see if there's a local facility. Of course, I know there is one that we could use to benefit the local community, even if it's a one-time event. And I think I'll leave Mr. Thomas's comments as they are. We had our conversation this afternoon, and the interest of the board was taken care of at that point in time. Next item on the agenda is the approval of action items in the agenda under consent. Board members, are there any items you wish to pull for discussion under unfinished business or tabled items portion of the agenda? Ms. Fisher.
I have none this evening.
Mrs. Dozier.
I have none.
Mrs. Morgan.
I have one, item 4A1 on page 15.
4A1, page 15. Mr. Armstrong.
I have none this evening.
And I have none. So with the exception of the one item, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Fisher, second by Mr. Armstrong. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 5-0. So we'll now move to the polled items. Item 4A1 on page 15. Dr. Graham, can you report that one for us, please?
Approval of minutes of school board meetings, December 10, 2013, school board action meeting, January 14, 2014, school board student hearings, January 14, 2014, school board workshop, January 14, 2014, school board action meeting.
Okay. Is there discussion?
Need a motion.
Oh, is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Dozier, second by Mrs. Morgan. Discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I'm the one who asked for the poll, and it has to do with the reporting of my comments on the January 14 meeting. And I have no idea what page it is. It's the January 14 meeting, and it's under Board Comments. So let me find it.
Page eight.
Page eight? Okay. What I am looking to do is to amend the wording of my comments. Okay. Ms. Morgan commented that she had spoken to Dr. Graham about her adding staff in her office before the recent additions. I'd like to amend that, and I have provided Ms. Johnson with the amendment, to read. Ms. Morgan commented that she had spoken to Dr. Graham and expressed her concern regarding the recent addition to her office staff.
So that's a motion to amend by changing that portion of the minutes as you phrase it?
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Dozier. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Dozier.
I would just ask, did you go back and view the tape and listen to the comments? Is that what you did?
No.
Okay.
But those were my notes that I had when I did my board member comments, so.
Okay.
No, but I didn't review the tape.
All right. Then I would also like to add an amendment to the amendment, I guess, asking that the tape be included as part of the change. The viewing of the tape would be part of the change. Because the tape of our meetings actually is the full record, so.
The recording is maintained as a public record, yes. Is your suggestion that it be reviewed before this amendment is made?
No. No, just that it would, I mean, it would stay in archive the way it is.
Yes, ma'am. It is maintained as required by law already without board action.
Thank you.
Are you saying that the tape supersedes the written notes in its accuracy? I'm asking this of Mr. Martin.
Well, the recording is maintained as a public record. The minutes are the official minutes adopted by the school board, so the minutes are the record of what the board, the action the board has taken.
So the written word can be altered based upon whatever a member would like to have it say? And I'm not making an accusation about anything. I'm just saying, a recollection on notes is not a recollection of the reality of what was spoken.
Then I will withdraw.
You're withdrawing the motion?
Yes, I am.
The motion to amend.
Yes.
The motion to amend has been withdrawn. Now move to...
Need a motion, a vote on the main motion, sir, to adopt those minutes.
Is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
We have that motion, sir. You just need a vote.
We need a vote.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the like sign. The motion passes 5-0. Move to item 5A, which is an application for charter school status. Dr. Graham? The original motion that was made on December the 10th.
I would like to withdraw my motion.
All right.
And I withdraw the recommendation.
Let's solve that problem in a hurry.
Yes, sir. There's no recommendation to take action on.
All right. So we move to 6A, which is superintendent's recommendations, good cause.
Approval of the application for charter school status from Florida High School for Accelerated Learning, South Lee County Campus Incorporated, for grades 9 through 12 school with a school name to be proposed at the time that the proposed charter school contract is submitted for review.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Dozier, second by Mrs. Morgan. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the like sign. Motion carries 5-0. Item B, please.
Approval to renew bid number B116996SM for core office supplies for schools, departments, and the district warehouse to Brain School Products, Doing Businesses, Brain School Products Division, Business Stationers, Inc., Contract Paper Group, Inc., DGS Educational Products, Marco Office Supply Furniture and Printing, Inc., Pyramid School Products, Quill Corporation, and Wollam Rock Supply, Inc. as primary, secondary, and tertiary vendors for the final renewal period of January 31, 2014 through January 30, 2015, at the estimated annual expenditure of $575,000 pursuant to the same terms and conditions as previously approved by the board. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Fisher, second by Mrs. Dozier. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the like sign. Motion carries 5-0. Item C, please.
Approval to renew bid number B137104GN for paving with Bateman Contracting LLP and Pavement Maintenance LLC for the first renewal period of February 5, 2014 through February 4, 2015, at the estimated annual expenditure of $1,250,000 pursuant to the same terms and conditions as previously approved by the board. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
By Ms. Dozier, second by Mr. Armstrong. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Item D, please.
Approval to award RFP number R137144BC for HVAC repair services to BNI Contractors, Inc. and Page Mechanical Group, Inc. as primary vendors, and Air Mechanical and Service Corporation as secondary vendor for the period of January 28, 2014 through January 27, 2017, at the estimated annual expenditure for the first year of $500,000, as indicated on the attached evaluation scoring sheets, with renewal options for two additional one-year periods upon the written agreement of the vendors in the district. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
Superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Fisher, second by Mr. Armstrong. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 5-0. Item E, please.
Approval of the estimated annual expenditure of $1,900,000 for the period of February 21, 2014 through February 20, 2015, for RFP number R117014GM for furniture and equipment for new schools awarded to Contracts Furnishings of Gainesville, Florida. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Dozier, second by Mr. Armstrong. Discussion?
Yes, I have a question. Dr. Graham, I know I talked to you about this late yesterday evening, and you was going to give me some information on this. Did you ever manage to get that of where this was going? Actually, is it going to the new schools, Dunbar and Tice?
Yes. Per the backup information, and I thought I shared that yesterday, but this bid supported the opening in August of Harns Marsh Middle Tortuga, and it is also supporting the renovation of Dunbar High School. So that's why it's coming back to you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. That's all I needed, ma'am.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the like sign. The motion carries 5-0. We'll move now to board attorney recommendations.
None this evening, sir. Thank you.
No public hearing, other business, board member comments. Start with Mr. Armstrong.
I gotta go first?
Yes.
Thanks. First, AMI. I've been out to your facilities. You do have a great program. There's no question about it. I've seen some of these kids that's come out of there. Sort of miraculous what you do out there. You really. But like Mr. Scott said, I know we're strapped. I know what's coming down the pike. I understand the financial burdens, but also believe somewhere down the road, we can find some type of mutual way to help and help you out. There's got to be a mutual ground that makes everybody... What it is, I don't know, but I'm sure Dr. Graham will look into it. She'll probably, hopefully, we can find some way to help, financial, whatever, but we do need to find some way to help each other out because definitely you guys help us out with a lot of these students. So I'm sure she'll look into it and get back to you, and we'll figure something out. Ms. Robertson. That's kind of cheesy because I'm feeding, and I'm feeding my kids too at the same time. But you know what? I do it anyways. And I know your kids are great on there because, well, two of them happen to be mine. And they obviously love their bus driver. But I would do what I could. Now to the, give you a little information about EDEC and what happened there this week. We had a meeting, and I know some of my colleagues asked about it. But it was also brought up about some of our town hall meetings in the EDEC. And shortly after I left that meeting, I went and addressed Dr. Graham and explained to her their concerns, and I'm hoping that she will look into this and find, because I, there's a couple facilities out there that I know that we can use, and I think we need to, you know, needs to be a little broader areas there that we can have some of these town hall meetings. And we preach about bringing the public in. Well, I think sometimes we actually need to go to the public, you know, take that extra But at the EDEC meeting as well, and this is just for my colleagues to know, we discussed several, several different topics. One of the topics I brought up and asked EDEC is, I know at times we've talked about not having proper representation in minorities on some of our committees, and I asked our EDEC to look into that and come up with ideas of how we can help. I know, again, you know, Anthony Thomas is here a lot, and he, I don't know if he serves on any of these committees, and he's very... he serves on any of these committees, and he's very vocal, very active in this, uh, school district. Hopefully he'll, you know, come up with ideas where he can sit on one of these committees. But one of the other things is, we went through district accreditation as well, which was very helpful, um, Mr. Martin was there. It's always a little nerve wracking with Mr. Martin sitting right there next to us, 'cause he's trying to keep us on task, thank you. But other than that, that's about all I have for today, Mr. Scott.
Mrs. Morgan?
Um, yes, I'm gonna start by referring to the memo that I sent to you all on January twenty first regarding, uh, a student athlete transfer policy. At that time, I said I was going to ask you to join me in instructing the superintendent and Board Attorney to draft a policy for student athlete transfers. And as I said, our school choice student assignment plan permits student athletes to transfer among schools for athletic reasons, practice which is having a negative impact on high school athletic programs and cultures, and exposes the district to sanctions. I also had a conversation with Mr. Martin in which I said, it, it was not my intent to instruct the administration to develop a specific policy, but I believe that we do have a problem, and I believe that it needs to be addressed in the policy arena. And I think it is appropriate to ask this, the Board Attorney and District Staff to acknowledge that there's a problem, and then try to find a solution to the problem and bring it back to the Board. So that is the nature of my request, and I'm asking for your support. And Brandon, I said I would call on you, um, I would like to hear your thoughts as well as that of the other Board members, but I won't start with you, I won't put you on the spot, I'll let somebody else go first.
Any, any Board members with comments, Ms. Fisher?
Yes, um, I, I, I read your memo, and it was quite comprehensive, and, um, I also did speak to, uh, Mr. Martin and Dr. Graham about it. It appeared, and I, and I've worked in a high school, so I, I know exactly what you're talking about, but, um, as a Board member whose primary responsibility is to advocate for students, I, I'm concerned about penalizing students for actions that may be perpetrated by adults, e.g. coaches, principals, and parents, and I understand that there is no application to parents in any, um, any of the statutory or the F H S A A, um, rules. So, um, a- and I did get, um, Mr. Martin's opinion, and then I went and did some research about the fact that a potential policy could, um, possibly violate the intent of the statute, and that counties who have had, um, a policy have ended up in court. So, at this time, um, I would like to see, um, Dr. Graham communicate with our, um, student assignment people and with our high school principals to better monitor, um, the adults who are, um, responsible for some of those transfers, and, I mean, if, if a student moves to another zone, he should not be penalized by not being allowed to participate in athletics, you know? I once had a student who lost a parent and had to move in with other relatives, and he wasn't able to play, I mean, and that was like adding insult to injury, so at this time, I, I'm not in favor of a policy. But I appreciate all your hard work.
Other comments? Mrs. Dozier?
Well, I read the policy, um, with, um, when I read it, I, uh, it, it all, it was almost like deja vu. Um, I have not brought it up at the table, however, I have brought it up to Dr. Browder, Dr. Tean, Dr. Burke, and I shared this with Dr. Graham, um, that I had brought it up to three prior superintendents, because I have, uh, received not only complaints, but I've also rece- from parents, but I've received complaints from schools, and I have also been given backup paperwork that shows about students, and there was also an article in the paper a couple of years ago, and it questioned a particular school changing one of its programs just so that, that student could, could manipulate the system, if you will, and get into a different program, a different football program. Um, and, and I do know that there is a situation that has been going on. When I talked to Dr. Graham about it yesterday, Dr. Graham said, "Let me work on this, and let us do this." Ms. Morgan, I, I understand where you're coming from, that you, you see a problem, and we need to nip it in the bud, I agree with you completely. However, I would say, let's give Dr. Graham an opportunity to work on it with, um, I would ask that you give her the opportunity, that we all give her the opportunity to work on it, and then if it's not met with our satisfaction, I think that we need to bring the subject back up, and we need, we do need to put a policy in place, because after all the policies, that's, that's the way we can, that's the way we get down into the governance of the district is through policy. And Dr. Graham assured me yesterday that she was going to take care of this, she's already met with the principals about it, and she is going to, uh, this is on her radar, she's going to deal with it, she's going to take care of it, and right now, I, I think that, that I'm willing, if you are, to let her have the opportunity to, um, work at it at that end, and then if we still see that we are having situations of abuse, because I think that's what it is, it's an abuse of the current system. And, you know, the ones, the one situation that you gave was that a student lost a parent and had to move in with somebody else, and they were penalized again. That, I think, is extenuating circumstances, and I think if we had a policy in place, we would have the opportunity to put something in the policy to do an extenuating circumstance. But when you've got a kid that says, that is being, being lobbied, if you will, y'all need to come over here to this school, we've got a better record, and that school, you're not gonna be seen by the scouts, and, you know, you, and, and the one particular student was, that I know was in the paper, was actually transported across the river, and that was the whole reason, that was part of the reason, not the whole reason, but that was part of the reason for the, um, the student assignment plan the way it was, so that students would no longer have to be transported across the river, because the burden was basically on the backs of one group of students. And, you know, those parents basically were saying, "Wait a minute, it's not fair that our kids are, you know, having the burden of being transported across the river," and, and all of a sudden, here is a student that's being transported on their own, that they want it to happen, because they wanna play at a different school, so, you know, they're, they're, it's a double edged sword, you know, some students want to, want to go and play at a school of their choice, you know, this isn't the N F L, you know? We are, you know, we're, we're a school district, and our first and primary duty is to educate all students, and provide students with, you know, equitable programs across the board. So, Dr. Graham, I told you yesterday that I would support you on this, and I, um, and I will also sit right here and I will tell you, the first time that I hear a complaint that so-and-so's out recruiting, or so-and-so's out recruiting, um, I'm going to come right with you to it, and I'm gonna hold you to the, I'm gonna hold your feet to the fire about it, because I know that it has been an extensive problem, and it's not just, it's not just at one school, but it's at multiple schools. And so, I, I think that maybe, you know, maybe our coaches just don't, and maybe our different people in the schools just don't understand exactly what recruiting is, maybe we need to give them a definition of what recruiting is. You know, because even if you're saying, "Well, if you come over here to this school, you can go to this program, then you can still play sports," hello, that's recruiting. So, that's where I am with it right now.
You know, this district has a very high mobility rate, and these students, they move one school, one district to the next, to the next, to the next, they, they keep bouncing in zones, and I've seen it year in and year out, even before I was on the Board. You know, the problem is, is if it's, there's coaches out there that's recruiting, you know, shame on the coaches. But as I talked extensively about this, Dr. Graham, um, we talked a little bit last night and then today, you assured me that you was gonna be addressing that, and these are your personnel, these coaches, they work for you, they don't work for me, and all I can do is put it in your hands, the situation, what's going on, and let you address it from there, and have the utmost confidence that you will address it accordingly. I refuse to get in the middle of that particular issue, they're your personnel, I don't think that we need to throw Board policy in without giving you the fair opportunity to look in it and figure out a resolution to this. After all, again, they are your personnel, nor do I, I, I feel like I need to get involved, so right now I won't be supporting any of this. I, I have the utmost confidence that you'll take care of it.
Brandon, did you have a comment?
I did. The way I look at it, students move schools for sports, and I support it. Um, people come to North Fort Myers High School all the time for our arts program, because our arts program is, it's amazing, I mean, it's highly rated, and, I mean, they move for that, so what's the difference in moving for an arts program, or, you know, the nursing program at other high schools as a sports program? I mean, we just got a new football coach, um, Ernest Graham from the Tim Bay Buccaneers, and for the first time, we've had students come to our school to play football, and I mean, that's not happened in a long time. So, I support the, um, the movement for sports, that is my opinion.
I won't ask you what you would've thought if he was coaching somewhere else. We're, we're, I, I believe first and foremost, we're about public education, and it involves everything about a student. But to me, the athletics, all the extracurriculars are extracurriculars, they're not the primary motivation. We do have a mobile district, we have lots of people moving between zones throughout the year. I think to put together a policy that says you can in these instances, but you can't in these, puts a tremendous burden on the people at the school level, and I would prefer that, that burden be switched, and it be switched to making certain that a principal has control of coaches and athletic directors, and the way in which they go about, I don't wanna call it recruiting, but populating the teams that they put on the field. I, I just think we have bigger fish to fry, and we need to consider doing that, it's not that it's unimportant, but in the whole scheme of things, it is not the most important thing we do, and I would have difficulty supporting, uh, Mrs. Morgan's suggestion, although I appreciate the thought that went into it. I, I'd like to know the extent to which this is really a problem, or whether it's a more perceptual problem. But again, I don't wanna pull resources off and chase it down, um, I, I think the obligation is on principals, the zone directors, the athletic directors, and coaches to, to control the situation, and, uh, that would be my way of proceeding with it.
Do you want me to comment now, or when I do my comments?
Sure, you can do now if you'd like.
First of all, about the mobility rate, last year, the east zone, it was thirty-six point five percent, west zone, twenty-six percent, south zone, twenty-two point eight percent, that's the actual mobility, that was last year, just to give you a sense of how many kids move around. I did meet with the high school principals, because I knew this was coming and wanted to get their thoughts, and we do have a transfer issue, but it goes way beyond athletes. And we have a student assignment plan, and our role, I'll talk about athletics for a minute, our role is to assign children to the school they're going to go to, and F H S A A, Florida High School Athletic Association, has taken care of the rules that make a child eligible. And listening to the principals, and they all talked, and they had quite a conversation, and I just listened, every issue they raised was student assignment, but I still asked the question when they were finished, which of these would a transfer policy strictly for athletes take care of? And they agreed none, but they, they are concerned about things like, we do have that children can move once a year, and, um, obviously, I will tell you that parents are in this mix as much as anybody, people are never gonna say they're moving for athletics, because they know we'll deny it, because we do. But their concern is that that one move a year can be anytime a child wants, and that's, that's a challenge in high school in particular, because that messes with grades and schedules and credits, and so, maybe we need to look at when we allow children to move, or if we allow them to move, the principals don't think seniors should ever be allowed to transfer unless they actually move, uh, because that just gets complicated and could, um, interrupt their, their road to graduation. Uh, there, there are multiple issues, the schools that fill quickly are concerned that their caps that we have on them keep them from getting all the students they might get, and, um, on and on it goes, but it's about all students. Now, we talked about the athletic issue, and, um, I think the principals are very clear, they know, uh, in some cases, that perhaps the accusations against their schools are true. Uh, my response to them was it is their responsibility to control the athletic programs in their schools, if they want better programs, so the kids wanna go there, create better programs. Some of the issues with coaches, some of it is with assistant coaches, some of it is kids just wanna move around, and our plan allows them to do that, so we have to look at the plan as a whole, and that's what we're going to do. In the meantime, because anything we change, you know, we've changed the number of batches for this year, but anything else we change would go into effect for F Y sixteen, so it would be the fifteen, sixteen year. In the meantime, I think principals, high school principals are very clear, uh, speaking of feet to the fire, they need to pay attention, because here, here's one of the issues, a lot of times, we wanna accuse a school of recruiting at where, and I say we, principals and staff, we're unwilling to give us anything to investigate, so we talk ugly about each other, and we make accusations, and we throw things around, and, and, um, we don't have anything to put our teeth in to really investigate. So, I, in my thinking, part of what we're gonna have to do is, it's not only gonna be the receiving school who has to sign on the dotted line, because F H S A A already requires that, when you get a transfer, you have to sign that you did nothing to recruit them. I think the sending school's gonna have to also have something to say about the child leaving, and, not that they can stop them, but did they indeed feel like the child was recruited, and if they did, then give us some information, let us investigate, because here's the thing, if you recruit a student and you are caught, you have forfeited your season. A school in Hillsborough County lost a championship for that very reason, so, and I know there are others, so, um, we have to, we have to get serious about it, I think the principals are clear, if they're not, they just weren't listening, and they have committed to pay attention to what's happening in their own school, and Ms. Dozier or anybody else, if you do hear anything, I need to know. Uh, we've, this is about integrity as much as anything, and, um, we wanna model that for our children, it's one of our character words every year, and so, we're, we have to get on it as adults, 'cause I would tell you, this is an adult issue that, in my opinion, ultimately hurts children. And, um, but the way, the way we're gonna resolve it in the long term, we've gotta look at our student assignment plan, and the transfer issues, particularly as it pertains to high school, will have to be for all students rather than just for athletes. But I'm grateful the topic came up, because it, it afforded us the opportunity to have a very frank conversation as high school folks, and, um, I think that conversation needed to be had among them, and I have confidence, and I mean this sincerely, I have confidence in our high school principals, that they know this is on the radar, they know people are watching, and, um, I hope parents get that message as well. It's not a game, no pun intended, but this isn't a game. So, stay tuned.
Mrs. Morgan, last word's yours, if you'd like it.
No, I'm moving on.
Okay.
I attended a meeting today with the Quality Improvement Advisory Committee, there were two presentations, one by Terry Kennedy of, uh, the Principal of Challenger Middle, and one by Brandy, um, Ma- Maquia, uh, Tropic Isles, about what they are doing, how they are using data to analyze results, focus on areas of improvement, and identify resources. Having sat there and watched this presentation, my immediate thought was, this is exactly the kind of presentation...
the kind of presentation we need to be getting at the board level. We need to know where the gaps are, and what efforts are being made, and how money is being expended to address those gaps. And we're not getting data, and that's why I asked for, in my memo regarding future briefings, that the superintendent provide us with data about how our students are doing today, how we compare, how we're trending. So I hope that will happen. At our last meeting, I neglected to mention that Jean LaFountain, who is Principal of the Early Childhood Learning Services Department, was selected to mentor new Head Start directors. And I think that's important to highlight, because there's a lot of conversation about whether or not we should be funding pre-K at both the state and the federal level. And everybody talks about the quality of leadership and the quality of staff in the school being the critical component. And I think this is the second or third time, just in the past year, that this particular Head Start program has been identified by the federal government as being absolutely top drawer. And so I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. Oh, and I wanted to mention that at our last DAC meeting, Dr. Graham presented an overview of the district and her aspirations for the district, and I thought it was very well-received. And again, I was disappointed by the turnout, but I hope people will look, who are interested in what Dr. Graham's vision for the district is, will look at the website and the video of that meeting. Just a comment about the recent announcement by Governor Scott that he's adding funds to schools. I just want to point out that we're still not at the 2006-2007 level of per pupil funding. In the meantime, the legislature has passed additional unfunded mandates, like technology, that continue to contribute to additional per pupil costs. So I say, stay tuned, but don't get excited. And, da-da-da-da-da. Oh, and yes, there is in the state legislature, a bill in the House and a bill in the Senate, proposals calling for reinvent our schools. They are talking about leveling additional, giving the school districts the ability to level additional capital millage. And I would like to point out that that is the state legislature and the State Department of Education and the governor passing the responsibility for funding, capital funding down to the local taxpayers and homeowners. So even though we are interested in recapturing some of the millage that we have lost, courtesy of the state legislature over the past few years, there is still an obligation, that doesn't abrogate the responsibility of the state to continue to fund education. With respect to the people who came up and spoke to us tonight, I too have been to AMI. I think it is a remarkable program. If there is any way that we can support you, I hope we can. I would hate to see that program leave, because I think it provides an incredibly valuable service to the students in this district. Denise John, I love partnerships with the district and nonprofits in the community. I think you guys did a great job. I was sorry I couldn't come to your December 6 event. I love that you're continuing to look for ways to partner with the district to create more opportunities for kids. So thank you for what you do. And to Jerry Ware, I hope we can add a site for us to, or I hope we can expand the number of sites that we are making available for meetings with parent and community members. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Mrs. Dozier.
Thank you. I too have had the opportunity to visit AMI. I have not been out there recently, and I do have the utmost respect for everyone there and the programs that you offer. You know, I wrote down one of the comments that, let's see, wanting money for transportation, and the dollars should have been in the current budget. Well, my first question would be, was there some reason why they were not in the budget to begin with? Did you ask for them, and we denied it, we cut your budget? Because, you know, everybody has a budget, and, you know, we approved our budget back in September, we approved the final board budget. And when we approved that budget, we basically, all of our money is accounted for. And in the meantime, when other entities, other people that we have contracts with bring to us what, you know, what our partnership with them will be with us providing funding, that's the time for us to make the decision whether or not we're going to give additional funding, or whether we're going to have to deny the funding. So my question would be, and I do not know that, and I will ask that of the superintendent, was there additional funding that you asked for, and then we denied that, and is that why you're, you know, having a shortfall? But I would also say that, you know, we're all under, you know, I appreciate what you're doing. We're all under, we're all under a decreasing budget. We have seen our budget decreased, and we are still not back to the levels of funding that we had back in 2006. And I say that regularly here at the table. You know, the legislature, you know, says they're going to put this budget out, and they're going to give us this, or the governor says he's going to put this out, and he's going to give us this. They still haven't reached the level of funding that we had several years ago. And we are still offering the same programs. We still have, we have more students than we had back in 2006. So we're doing more with less. So, you know, if the superintendent can find any way to work with you, I certainly hope that she will. Whether or not there is the ability for us to get any additional funding for that program, maybe through a grant or something like that, that might be an option also, is to look for some way to write a grant to get some funding for them, for us to help them write a grant, because I know we've got grant writers. Just looking at different options. Ms. Robinson, where are you? There you are. You just tend to amaze me. You're always there for the kids, and I appreciate that. In fact, I know that you're going to leave, and I don't remember when exactly you're leaving, but I really do regret that you're going to leave this community, because you have done so much for our kids. And I know our kids just have such a high level of respect for you, and it's these little things that you do that lets them know that they really do care, you know, that you, they have a bus driver that really cares for them, and I appreciate that. I remember when you came up here and wanted turkeys, because you want, you know, that was a particular year when kids weren't going to have Thanksgiving, and you wanted to help provide a meal to where they could have, you know, a raffle to where the kids could have meals. And I think we gave 10 turkeys. Did we give 10 turkeys, five or 10, something like that? I don't remember how many we gave, but we gave quite a few. And, you know, this is kind of like that, as far as I'm concerned. You know, it's breakfast with the bus driver, I think is a great idea. And I don't see any reason why, as a board, we couldn't pony up a little bit of money. If we all ponied up, it wouldn't be about 12 bucks a person, the whole team, if we would be willing to do that. I would certainly be willing to do that. And, you know, I remember when we did the turkeys, I think I was the one that spoke out and said, "Let's do it." And, you know, there were some reservations, oh, if we do it here, everybody's going to be asking, and yet nobody else came up. So, you know, I would just, I would ask the board members to think about that. I don't want to put any of you on the spot right now and ask you, but I would ask that you to consider that. Ms. Morgan, I want to thank you for bringing the memo about the transfers to the forefront, because I had been talking with superintendents behind the scenes, asking for assistance, and I was told that I was getting assistance, but now I've had one to say, okay, we've got it out here on the table. So thank you for bringing that to the table. I appreciate that. Accountability is something that we have got to have. As far as you touched on the legislation that I was going to talk about, the particular bill that will allow us to increase the millage to 1.75, it started in the House, it does have, it now has a component bill in the Senate. It's got, you know, it's going to, from what I hear, with my ear to the ground, I'm hearing that it's going to pass, and there we go. It's going to be, we're going to be the big bad guys that are going to be raising taxes. So, you know, every year, we are the ones that are having to, I shouldn't say "we," our community are the ones that continue to have to bear the burden of funding education. And we are losing, we are losing more and more dollars that are collected that don't come back home to Lee County. And what we can do about that, I really don't know, but we have to have a collective voice in Lee County, and we, at some point, we have to say, okay, enough is enough, folks. We, you know, we send a lot of our money up to Tallahassee, and we want our fair share back. You know, it's regretful that there are communities that don't collect as much tax as we do, but, you know, we need to have our fair share back, because it's hurting, it's beginning to really show the effect of hurting our community. Ms. Morgan, also, I appreciate the fact about asking for data. I know that's something that Dr. Cuckel and I would constantly ask for, not only about students, but we need data on, in order to do a based, you know, a zero-based budget, the way you need to start is you've got to justify your programs. That's the whole purpose of a zero-based budget. How do you justify your programs? You look at the programs that you have, you present data that shows that they're working. If they're not working, guess what? Out the window they go. That's what we need to get a handle of doing. We need to get a handle of looking at data to make those financial decisions of whether or not we are going to, whether or not we are going to keep programs. We can't just keep them just because so-and-so likes that particular program. We've got to make data-driven decisions. And with a quality organization, that is the way, the how, the do, that you make the decisions. So thank you for attending the quality meeting. I think that's one of the places that we really have kept our foothold in quality. So I appreciate that. Mr. Thomas. I'm really not going to make any comments as of yet. I need to go back and review the tape from today, so that I can see what everybody's comments were. I know that I was one of the, I was the co-pilot, I will say. I won't say that I was the pilot, you were the pilot, but I was the co-pilot in initiating this initiative about minority groups. And I agree with you completely. The DAC committee, or not the DAC, excuse me, the ADAC, it doesn't meet enough, you know, four times a year? That's not sufficient. That's not sufficient to be able to have any type of continuity. So I would say that if, I would offer a compromise, that if we might need to broaden that committee, and we also might need to look at redefining what that committee, I don't know, Mr. Martin, if I'm stepping over the line, but because of the court order, I think was the reason we got ADAC, isn't that correct?
Well, initially, that's true, but there's no longer a court order in place, so there's no obligation.
So we could make changes to ADAC, and we could say that it will be a regularly advisory committee, it'll meet this many times a year, and it'll have this many members, and, because, you know, that might be a solution here, that we could do something like that. So I'm going to go back, and I'm going to look at the tape, I'm going to see what everybody's objections were, basically, why there was an objection, and then I will be prepared to bring something back and have a discussion at the next meeting. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Ms. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Yes. I just want to make a few comments about a couple of visits that I made this past couple of weeks. Attended the MLK Unity Breakfast at the Carrie Robinson Center, and certainly enjoyed that, and the dream does continue. I want to give congratulations and appreciation to those who participated in the Edison Inventors' Fair. And a special shout-out to Rick Tully for his part in that, and it's very impressive. We're in good hands in the future. I was invited to be a judge at the First Annual West Zone Talent Show for life skills and communication disorder classes. It was quite amazing. Five schools participated, and there wasn't a dry eye in the house, and it was very well-attended. So to those people who organized that, thank you for what you do for kids. I spent some time at Gulf Elementary in the third grade doing story mapping, and let me tell you, those kids are not going to have any problems with FCAT this year, because they are amazing with their use of language and writing and critical thinking skills. I had a visit at Gulf Middle School, and I want to say they have a teacher there, Jamie Ayers, and her second book, being published, is released this week. And I am almost finished with the first book, and she's quite amazing. So along with all of the hidden talent, well, not so hidden talent that we have among our students, we have a lot of hidden talent in our staff members, and we really need to showcase that and appreciate that also. For my, for Lloyd Brooks, our Coordinator of Counseling Services, and for my former colleagues, and for Nesta Avila, who's taking on the leadership for the Lee County School Counselors Professional Association, thank you for what you do every day for kids and for the decisions that you help them make, which lead to success in the future, whether they go on to higher education, job, military, or what. But I want to thank you so much for that. Brandon, thank you for being brave enough to be our first student representative, and for your input. And you're an amazing young man, and I certainly appreciate that you have joined us and been willing to take that chance, and you've paved the way for others, and thank you for that. AMI, I know the work you do with our own Lee County students who need a different placement, so I'd just like to echo Mr. Scott's request to see if there's anything at all that we can do at this point, and to say that I hope when we are preparing for the next go-around with the budget, that you certainly are part of that. I have, we had a little discussion this afternoon at the briefing meeting about "bring your own device." So I have some input from a seventh-grade student who texted me this afternoon, and I'd like to share it with you. "There are endless advantages to technology. We can save money on textbooks, have students be more enthusiastic in class, and have less weight in our book bags, which will cause fewer back problems for the students in the future. We can use these tools for internet resources, eBooks, calculators, et cetera. Having phones and tablets in the classroom would improve time management. Also, kids wouldn't always be asking for pencils. Another advantage would be less students with lost assignments, as they would all be on his or her own device." So that's from a seventh grader, in favor of bringing your own device. I want to mention, I'm saving you for last, Kathleen, because I have a surprise for you. Coalition for a Drug-Free Southwest Florida continues to be part of the Community Wellness Program, and they will be having the 22nd Annual Drug House Odyssey on March 11th, 12th, and 13th at Cape Christian Fellowship in Cape Coral, and they need volunteers, if anyone's interested. You can go on their website, drugfreesouthwestflorida.org, and volunteer. I was happy with the report from the Curriculum Advisory Committee, and I have the privilege to serve with a wonderful group of people. And I'm happy with the recommendation that was made to the board, that we reach out to higher education institutions to establish formal grassroots coordinating groups and ensure a more seamless K-20 education for all students, and with attention to kids with special needs. The School Health Advisory Committee continues to advocate for comprehensive health education and to have a curriculum which offers developmental teaching, which will lead to a long and healthy lifestyle for our kids. Mrs. Robinson, a citizen who was watching you when you made your appeal, has told me that if you will get in touch with her, she has gotten McDonald's to donate the breakfast for the kids with the bus driver. So I'll give you her number afterwards. And in closing, I just want to say thank you to my fellow board members for your dedication to helping our mission and vision become a reality, and especially thank you to our dedicated staff who make a difference for kids every day, thanks to the parents who trust us to educate their kids, and to the students who make us so proud. Thank you.
Mr. Rice.
I would like to invite everybody tomorrow-
I would like to invite everybody tomorrow night to North Fort Myers High School. We are holding our annual Mr. Red Knight competition. Mr. Red Knight is a male beauty pageant that showcases our senior boys in formal wear, casual wear, swimwear, their talent. And the special thing about this year is all proceeds are going to the organization Grace for Chase. Grace for Chase is an organization that was created to help a seven-year-old boy at the time who was battling leukemia. He is now nine, and he's still battling it. And the thing that makes him special to us is his mother was a teacher at our school, who had to leave to take care of him and provide the 24-hour care that he needs. And they travel back and forth from hospitals to doctors and weeks in the hospital on end. And with only one parent working, it's hard provide for a family, especially when you have one that's sick. So we'd like everyone to come out and support us to help us raise the proceeds to go to him. I would also like to thank Ms. Fisher for the kind words she said to me. It's been an honor up here. I loved it. Next meeting, I will be handing it over to another one of the superintendent advisory council. And let them take over for a little while. So thank you.
Thanks. But we've really enjoyed having you here and participating and seeing things from this side of the table. It's a little bit different, but I hope it's been beneficial. And Mrs. Dozier encouraged you to wear a red shirt, I understand, so he followed your instructions tonight, honoring North Fort Myers High School. This afternoon, at the briefing meeting, was one of the quarterly reports by all of the advisory committees for the board. And as I mentioned this afternoon, I felt like they, in three and a half years, we finally got to the point where I really wanted to see them, where there were specific recommendations coming from the hard work that the board, that the advisory committees had done. And I've asked Dr. Graham to consolidate those, bring them back to us with specific recommendations as to actions we might take or in lockstep with the committee's recommendations or modify them in some way based upon information that we have. But I appreciate everybody who's participated in those, and the participation rate has been very good. We did have discussion as a result of that and their reporting about EDAC and whether or not we should have regular reports from them. And the agreement was that we should, and they should come to us on the same kind of schedule. The work they do is as important as any of the other committees. And to, to make that statement to the board, it's important to get them in front of us with their recommendations, no matter what they may be, whether they're good, bad, comfortable or uncomfortable. So I'll be happy to see all of them come back again in the next quarter. And hopefully between now and then, we'll be able to respond and tell them, "These are the things that we've done with the recommendations that you gave us." Mr. Martin, do you have any comments?
No, sir. Thank you.
Dr. Graham.
I, I do this every time. After we do consent, I'm supposed to introduce the administrators, and so they wait patiently. So I do want to have you meet Heather Parker, who is our new coordinator for Employee Wellness Program. Is Heather still here? There she is. Welcome, Heather.[1381.53][1381.53](APPLAUSE). And Todd Everly, you know, but as part of the growth of the Southwest Florida Public Service Academy, Todd has been promoted from coordinator to director. So thank you for your work.[1396.15][1396.15](APPLAUSE). Ms. John, I would encourage you to see Mrs. Coos. Kristy, could you raise your hand before, she's right behind you a couple rows, before you leave, and she will coordinate a time for you all to meet and talk about next steps, since that's what you're asking for. AMI, we've had conversation, and I will tell you, I heard pretty clearly from all of you that you want me to revisit, and it's, the only thing that's going to help them is money. So if that's what you're telling me to do, then I'll have to look and see. I said no, because it's not budgeted. And I will tell you that the contract was in place when I got here, and we've talked about renegotiating for next year. No one, no one in any way lessens the importance of the work they do. But I will certainly go back and, you just need to know when I come back, it's going to be about money, because that's the only thing that's going to help them. The upcoming student assignment meetings, am I hearing that you want one added? Okay. If that's what I'm hearing, then, then we'll work to do that. Dunbar High School would have been one of the locations, except it's really not suitable to do that in its current condition. And so we just did one high school in each zone. We will go back and, and visit that. I can't give you a date right now, because that's going to depend on, on, it's going to depend on where we have it and, and staff availability. I want the community to understand that the, this meeting is, we're, we're not calling it a town hall meeting, it's a student assignment education, information meeting is what it is. And we are going to educate people on our student assignment system. We really want business people there so they understand it, and parents, and then we're going to offer the opportunity for parents who want to take care of their enrollment process at that time. You know, I hear nobody's going to come, and then I hear we need more venues because everybody's going to come. So it'll either be a wonderful success, and I'll be thinking, "Oh, my gosh, how are we going to enroll all these students?" Or we'll come back next year and say, "Should we do these at all?" But we really do want to educate the community before they make their choices, and they've got lots of time this year, because it's not until the end of March they have to make them. And no matter how much we tell people, all we're doing right now is collecting enrollment forms. We still had our very first form at 12:06 a.m. on the day that the system opened. It just doesn't matter. As long as you get it in by the deadline, you have the same chance in the lottery. So we'll just keep saying that. But I think it shows we need some education meetings, because some people still don't get it. We will have a new student representative next month, as Brandon said, and we'll be excited about that. I went to the All County Orchestra Concert last week, and I, I was struck by two things, the, well, I was struck by three things. These little babies got up from elementary school, two different elementary schools, and my word, it was, it was just pretty unbelievable what they can do at that young age. And then the middle school got up, and they played a Katy Perry song, "Who Knew?", that Katy Perry does orchestra music. And that was a surprise. But what really struck me, when the high school kids got up, the, the director, the director of the orchestra at Cypress High is a Cypress High graduate, arts, from the first arts class in that, when that school was open. And she had one of her friends, who had been a classmate, who's now a director in, well, she's just moved to New York. She was in the Orlando area for a while, had her come down as the guest clinician. And she made a comment, and I tweeted it actually, right after she made it. And she said, she thanked parents, and she said, "Students are making magic on this stage with their music. They're making magic." And then she said, "And you can't do that on YouTube." So I thought that was pretty relevant in light of all the, all the conversation about technology today. And then, let's see, the last thing I wanted to tell you is that I sent you the information that I shared when the Education Alliance had their meeting with the legislative delegation last week. Everybody was there except for one, and that, that, that member of the delegation sent a representative. I will tell you, I think they were listening. My role in it, we each had our own role. My role in it was to talk about the capital funding issue. And Dr. Desmore came up with a visual of how the dollars have declined. And it was striking when, when they could actually see a picture of, "We're not making this up." So they were, they listened, they asked a lot of questions. They also asked that we meet with them earlier next year, because when we met with them last week, it was the last day for any bills to be submitted, and they would like the opportunity to have more time, because we are their region, we are who they represent. It wasn't just, you know, the alliance is the five-county area. And so it, I thought it was a productive meeting, and they were listening. And just one other thing, I, I encourage you all that what we really need to do for the next couple of months is really push legislators, talk to them, inform them, "They're in session, now's the time to, to spend time." And hopefully, they will come through with what we need. And if they fail to, then we go to the community and say, "What do you want to do with your schools?" Because they, they are the community schools. So in the midst of all that, I, I was, I received an invitation today to go to a governor's roundtable next week. And I called Bob Sarah to ask, ask whether it was just one of those things I got or if I really needed to go. And so I'm going. He was pretty clear on what I needed to do. So while I'm up there, he is in the process of making some appointments for me, again, to speak with our local delegation. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. And as always, I'm grateful to have the opportunity to lead. Thank you.
Next meeting of the board is February 11th, the special board meeting at 2:00, followed by the briefing meeting immediately, and then school board action meeting at 6:00 p.m. Having no other business to come before this body is our motion for adjournment.
Move.
Motion by Armstrong, second by Ms. Fisher. All in favor? Aye. Meeting's adjourned.